He wandered out when he was hit with the garden.
The Patriot.
Oh, yeah.
They all get stolen. They had to like truck in dirt to make the roads dirt and everything.
Yeah, that's cool.
Bizarre. It was a horse-drawn carriage tour. It was pretty interesting.
It's an old old.
I know who you're talking about.
And there's some really nice beaches near there.
Mm-hmm.
I have relatives that would have been in Wilmington. In fact, two, one needs someone back here.
Of course, how many? We had, we only have thirty thousand left behind.
I'm gonna go see my sister in North Carolina this summer.
Wilmington, that's, so I spent a lot of time in Jacksonville, uh, campus June too, um, so like, we'd go to like Emerald Isle to go drink beer on the weekend.
Oh, yeah, it's serious.
Yeah, I'm just beautiful.
I love that. My, what, my wife loves it because the water is warm. It's not cold like here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I love it.
But that gentleman you're talking about, I saw him.
The water says it's warm to swim in.
It's like bad water.
Refreshing.
In Birmingham.
Well, my wife tempted me to jump into Ross.
Probably takes a bus back and forth. I know a lot of homeless. Y- yes, yes, yes. And looks.
I went swimming there.
Oh, six, okay, here we go.
Good evening. Um, I am gonna call this city council meeting to order. Will you please stand with me to say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and moving into roll call, um, I'm going to acknowledge that everybody is here, if that's okay, with Sarah, Councilwoman Sarah Diamond, absent. She did ask for, um, permission to be gone, and so we did grant that, so she is excused. Is that okay with the council?
Yes.
Okay, moving on then to approval of the agenda, item D. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move forward with the agenda, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman. Yes?
Mayor, if it's okay, could we add an executive session, please, to the end to discuss pending litigation?
Oh, certainly we can do that. So, um, let's make, let's, let's, um, change this just a bit, so approval of the agenda with the addition of the executive, um, session to talk about pending litigation. Council approve? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. I'm gonna add that, just a moment here. All right, moving on then to the consent agenda, items one and two. Uh, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes?
I just wanted to make a comment on number two of the grant agreement.
Yes.
I just wanted to thank Woody for the hard work in getting that going, and congratulations on having that pass. It's gonna be much-needed servers, and that was awesome. Good work.
Thank you. Nice, very nice. So are you making a motion at the same time?
Correct. I'll make a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavakas, again by Councilman Burns. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, uh, moving on to, um, let me see here, where am I at? The city administrator report, and, uh, okay, Charlie?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Johnson, members of the council. I'm gonna turn it over here to Public Works Director Bill Bullock for a couple of updates that are listed, first Olmsted Park.
So we'll start with Olmsted Park. Um, as council knows, we've been waiting for approval of our MPDS from the National Park Service. We've, in quick succession, gotten that NEPA approval, and we, um, I think on the fifth of July. It's kinda weird with last week being so broken up. We, uh, actually got our notice of award from, um, uh, National Department of Interior, RCO, for, um, hold on, six hundred and twenty-four thousand plus some change. So that completes our funding mosaic for, uh, Olmsted Park. Uh, we will, um, basically tighten up and basically get bid-ready documents ready, but we will not probably go to bid on this until January. And part of the reason why is as you go into, um, obligating those RCO funds with a contract, uh, you know, for signature, and then you start a three-week bid process, and then you start a month-long process before you can give notice to proceed, that type. We're all of a sudden in October, November in construction, so if we, so what we'll do is make sure we have a very solid, uh, bid set. We'll be one of the first jurisdictions to go to bid on projects in January, which should give us very good bidding conditions. And then part of this project, the civil, um, uh, the roads, the trails, all the civil work can't begin until July first anyway, so this lets us maybe start the vertical construction of the restrooms and the caretaker's house and some of those components, say like in April timeframe, and have those actually done and, and, and ready for roads and driveways and all that stuff to be done. So then that way, we basically will be able to do a ribbon-cutting potentially next August and have it ready, open in the middle of summer, and have a clean project. So, um, that's where we stand, so we're pretty darn excited right now. And then, um, the climate planning grant in stormwater, uh, we, we were asked, uh, last council meeting to take a look at if their stormwater comprehensive plan could be, uh, dovetailed with the climate, I better get this right, sorry, um, climate planning grant that we received from WashD, and as, uh, Tom, uh, and I looked into it, the answer to that is, uh, very unlikely and, and probably is really even a hard no. So the climate action planning, gosh, I'm sorry, I get tongue-tied with this stupid thing. The climate planning grant, um, is really focused towards fossil fuels and reducing, very specifically repeatedly throughout the grant scope of work, reducing vehicle miles traveled, uh, and greenhouse gases, so reducing your vehicle miles traveled and electric vehicles, basically. It's kind of, my, my inclination is to assume that it's really supporting the governor's, um, uh, priorities for doing that, but it does not, uh, really have any capability for, uh, other pollution generating features like stormwater can with the P, six PPD and some other things. It's really, and Tom can maybe expand on this a little bit as well, but it's, it's really focused towards reducing fossil fuels from vehicles specifically, not even factories or something like that. It's.
It's like greenhouse gases, is it?
Greenhouse gases, uh, and again, reducing the vehicle miles traveled, uh, coming up a strat, which means things like transit and non-motorized and things like that to encourage those things. And so, anyway, council asked us to take a look at it. We have, and, and the, the, uh, climate planning grant is actually pretty inflexible. It, it wants you to do some very specific things, and actually, um, uh, designates very specific dollars amounts to each one of its line items. Um, and so just really doesn't have, uh, a possibility of making that fit. I guess I'll answer any questions if council has any for that, but, but that's kind of what we found.
Councilman Lavakas?
I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Bill, for looking into all that for us. Very important stuff. Um, so we got this, uh, climate planning grant for five hundred thousand, I believe, is what it was, somewhere around there, and all of that's gonna go to looking at how we can pretty much densify our community and keep us from going anywhere. That's the idea. I mean, if it's just traffic, five hundred thousand for that, seems like a lot for that activity. Maybe somebody can expound on that.
Sorry. Hi, can, is this, yeah, hi, uh, this is Tom. Um, so we haven't worked out, uh, completely yet on what that's gonna be. Our focus has been on the, on the other side, on the other grant, uh, but we will be moving into the climate policy grant work, um, here shortly, and we can give you an update soon. Um, our open house is, uh, next, um.
Monday.
Thank you. Next Monday, I almost said next Wednesday, next Monday, um, so I'm hoping we'll hear more at that time, and certainly can bring up that question too at that time.
And my understanding is you're also setting up an advisory committee for.
Yes.
That, okay, and I would like to attend those, for sure. Um, and if you could get me the invites to that, that would be wonderful. Then also on that, if we're setting up our comprehensive plan based upon the money that we currently have to have that set up as our twenty-year goal, will this, uh, climate plan almost counteract with that if we set up that plan and then the climate comes in and says, oh, well, we're looking for more densification and traffic control, but your comprehensive plan is calling for such and such, but we already spent money developing that side? So do they have to go in concert in order to be, you know, not that we're fiscally responsible anyways as a state, but fiscally responsible?
With the two, with the two planning grants, is that what you're, yeah, they do have to be in, in alignment, in agreement.
So one we're working on right now in this direction is basically, here's our comp plan, and this is gonna be the update for this next twenty years that we have to file next year. Once we get that moving along or wrapped up, then we start looking into the feedback we got on the climate grant, and we see how they, how they work together, or what adjustments need to be done?
They'll be done at the same time with the same deadlines. I believe it's the same deadlines.
Yes, I believe so.
So, yeah, and, yes, as I reminded, the climate action policy will be in the comp plan.
Okay, thank you.
So if I can add a thought, you know, and, and this is just my interpretation at this time, I would say the climate planning grant is gonna actually rather, I mean, there's not a lot of ways you can reduce vehicle miles traveled by a significant amount, in my opinion, and this will, uh, really probably mainly focus in how we're going to encourage converting to electric vehicles or, or hybrid-type vehicles, um, as a way of reducing that greenhouse gas effect and the effect of vehicle miles traveled on the, uh, envi- Basically, how do you reduce fossil fuel consumption? Is, uh, if I had to predict what our particular climate chapter is gonna say, it's going to show larger benefits doing that than it is somehow reducing our vehicle miles traveled by twenty-five percent or something like that, 'cause I do not think that's a achievable goal, but, um, we will certainly have to have policies that we investigate. How do we do those types of things? But I think the reality in a, in a meaningful change to how we do things is gonna be how do we convert to, uh, either hydrogen fuel cells or electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles and that type of thing. And again, it's not, it, it's giving ourselves targets and, and encouraging, uh, our community to move towards those targets. It's not necess, I don't believe it necessarily says that, you know, in twenty thirty-five, we need to have six thousand members of this community out of twelve thousand, you know, has to own an electric vehicle. I mean, you can't do that, right? But that's the type of, I think, nature that's gonna come out of this plan.
And then last comment, if I may. Uh, I think that's the idea there is that we're not leaving it to the free market, we're not living, leaving it to the people. Like you said, it's what they anticipate us to do with this climate money they gave us, which they gave us five hundred thousand dollars of our property tax back to us. And then they turned around and they say, we're going to have you streamline this direction. Just like you said, they can't limit our mileage, but that's, even if they try, that's limiting our freedom of movement throughout our community or throughout our state that we wanna do, so then the next best thing is to limit what we can or strongly encourage what we can and subsidize with our tax money additional ways. It is, I'd, I'd be interested in seeing what ends up coming of this and what the community really feels about it, because it's their money ultimately, right, yeah. But I do appreciate you guys working on it and clarifying that. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to make a, yes?
So, uh, we covered this, um, actually this, this exact topic in our, um, uh, Public Works Committee meeting, uh, tonight, and, um, and last night was the first time I'd seen it, but, um, so we have a budget that stipulates exactly on sixteen line items, the amount that we can spend per each line item, and it, it was really disappointing for me to see that, because I thought we were gonna have twenty-five thousand for, you know, climate and EPA and all that other stuff to kinda go in the direction of, um, saving the, saving the taxpayers' money, so, um, but, but, um, staff is gonna work as hard as they can to use anything in here for any line item to basically, um, if that can be used to mitigate any expense on the taxpayers out of our general fund or, um, any rate increases or anything that we can do, um, we're gonna try, but that five hundred thousand dollars is very strict for how, and I, I wish I would have known this months ago, but, so, that's all, that's all I had about that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if not, um, Bill, was there anything else that you wanted to add, or?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. Charlie, anything you wanna, okay, moving on then to council, um, reports. Councilman Lai.
Well, I don't really have anything, but I was gonna, last night I was out at Clear Lake Beach and took my granddaughters out there, and we had a blast. But I was thinking about it, and I kinda thought I'd pass on a tidbit of information that most people don't know, that if, that Clear Lake Beach is run by the county, but if they wanna start charging or screw up, it reverts back to the Cedar Woolley Kiwanis Club. So it, it's, it's not owned by the Kiwanis, but it, if the county screws up, it goes back to the Kiwanis, so, thought you might find that just interesting.
That is interesting. Do you also want to make an announcement again regarding the skate competition? You wanna put that out there?
By God, I forgot about it. It, we're doing it August seventeenth, and in the next week or so, we'll start getting serious about it, and hopefully we'll have it all ready to go within a couple of weeks, but we've got the public address system arranged, and everything's coming to frutation, so we'll get going here pretty soon, and it's, I, I get the feeling it's gonna be packed. The end.
Again, that's great. All right, Councilwoman Kestie.
Thank you. So, um, I had many, many, many complaints about the fireworks, and, um, and then a phone call to come see what North Reed looked like after the neighbors had, you know, blown them up in the air, and the trees, and how it ended up on some of my neighbors' roofs. And I don't know what we can do as a city. I know we don't have enough to police all of this, but hopefully we can come to some sort of resolution on it. I'm not sure, because people are very upset about it.
Quite a sight, wasn't it? Yep. Councilwoman Henderson.
So last week, we had a very, very successful week here in town, um, at, at the expense of the, uh, police and fire departments, uh, working around the clock to, uh, do a fantastic job of keeping everything and everybody safe. Um, I know we had a incident down at the park, and I know the fire department was running around twenty-four seven, so, people notice, people appreciate it, and, uh, you, you guys' departments just do a fantastic job. Um, Public Works was all over the place, uh, getting road closures and open and closed, and taking out trash and back and forth, and, um, it was just really awesome to see the city come together and just knock that event out of the park. It was a really successful week. I, I did have, um, a constituent ask about, um, they're excited to hear about our crosswalk, uh, grant, the additional, I think it was twelve, um, uh, ADA ramps that are going in, and, um, they've seen that that works already started, and they're pretty excited about it. Um, I, I did have a few people ask, again, I know Mr. Lee was working on, uh, a traffic study for the, um, Ferry Street and Township Street intersection to make that an all-way stop, and also down at, um, Jamison and Township, um, so I, I had some questions asked about those becoming, uh, four-way stops, and one of them's an always, would be an all-way stop because it comes in and out of a, an apartment, so, um, that, that was something that, um, that Mark tasked Mr. Lee out with, and, um, and, uh, that's all I have. Um, Will, Will, if you could, um, if you could just make a note of that for the, for those stops, and then, um, then we'll, we'll reconvene.
Sorry, real quick, what was the second one?
Uh, it was, uh, Township and Ferry, and then Jamison and Township.
Okay. So, yeah, I can do the, that, I, I'm a traffic guy.
Okay.
So I, I'll take a look at the MUTCD warrants, and I'll, I'll give you a report next council meeting.
Thank you.
All right. And thank you so much for acknowledging our first responders. Fantastic. Councilman Cock?
Uh, yes, I'd also like to echo the sentiment thanking, uh, the fire department, the police department, and our city staff, uh, during Lager Rodeo and the Fourth of July. I thought they were fantastic events for our community, and I, I appreciate your professionalism. Uh, my second point is that with these extremely high temperatures, I would just like to call out to our community, if you know anyone who's living alone, who's a senior citizen, who is, maybe, uh, has some health problems, please check in on them. This area, it doesn't have a lot of air conditioning, and I know it could be dangerous for some folks, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Burns?
Wanted to echo the sentiments of thanking the city staff. I'm the outgoing president for the Lions Club, and we facilitate the parade, so I really appreciate what all you do to help us make that happen. Uh, without you, it would not be possible. I mean, we have city staff out the night before and early in the morning. Uh, heck, I had to chase down Chief McElroy to make sure he was gonna be in the parade, 'cause he was still, uh, keeping people moving for the, uh, foot race, so I really appreciate the dedication of everybody and, uh, helping come together as a community to make that happen. It's a lot of work, but, uh, I think everybody enjoys it, so, thank you very much. I also wanted to bring your attention, council members, if you hadn't seen the email from, uh, Chief Wagner, um, talking about the, uh, grants and the mobile integrated health process. Um, looks like there was one grant that was denied. We talked about this, uh, at the last Public Safety Committee meeting, and I forgot to bring it up to the council, so I just wanted to highlight that now. Uh, looks like they are still moving forward with this, uh, the mobile integrated health. They were denied one grant from North Sound ACH, but we still have the Peace Health Grant for them to work from. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavakas?
Awesome. Thank you very much, and, uh, we did have an awesome week this last week, which was amazing. You know, Cedar Woolley is well-known for its celebrations, and we do the, the park events, the concert at the parks, and the parades, and we do the Christmas and the Fourth of July, and we draw lots of crowds, and it takes a lot of resources, and it takes a lot of people from our community to be involved in those, and I do wanna thank them, and, and this community makes it such a fun, fun opportunity for so many people in Skagit and around the state to come and visit and see what it's like. We have the longest-running parade, and we have amazing Lager Rodeo shows, so, really a lot of fun there. Uh, I would like to get, uh, um, uh, an excuse for leaving next meeting. I think it's in two weeks from now. Uh, I'll be on vacation, so I will not be able to attend. Hopefully I can get that approval from you guys, unless you make me stay, no. Yeah, right, and then I did send an email to Charlie. There was some discussion with some council about the interest in having lampposts, um, kind of filling up around the town and Ferry Street and, uh, you know, Murdoch, um, maybe Woodworth, whatever, just having more lampposts kind of filling town. I don't know if you've got that to the Public Works Committee, Charlie? Yeah, awesome. Um, and so, yeah, just looking to see what a budget on one or two of those lamps looks like, we're set. That way we can see what can we replicate that with, and we do have strategic funds to kinda support that, and I think that would look really good over Christmas or some of these times. I mean, yeah, it, it would be great, so. Thank you, and thank you for giving that out.
Thank you. So, um, is there any opposition to Councilman Lavakas, um, giving him an excuse to not be here? I know we're so much fun to be with. All right, so have fun wherever you're going. Oh, wow, wow, yeah, well, you will, no doubt there. Um, so I just have a couple of things. First off, I, um, it was, I agree Lager Rodeo was absolutely phenomenal, and, you know, um, it, it, it wouldn't happen if it wasn't for the different, um, clubs that actually, um, work hard to make that happen. The Lions Club, want to thank them for the log drive and putting together the parade. The parade is a feet and a half, and every year it gets longer, but you always do an amazing job, so I wanna thank, uh, the Lions Club for that. I also wanna thank Lager Rodeo for the multiple, multiple, multiple activities that they do, from the beard contest to the pie-eating contest, to the junior Lager Rodeo, to, um, carnival, um, I mean, I just, selling the T-shirts and bringing in the vendors, and it's phenomenal what a small group of people can actually pull off and make happen, um, within our town, and I also wanna thank the volunteers that stepped up to make things happen too. Um, no doubt, our first responders, our fire and police, um, you guys are our heroes, the way that you, you know, sacrifice your own, your own holiday too, so that we can enjoy ours and keep us safe, so, um, extend a great, um, deal of thanks to you for that. Lager Rodeo did purchase a carving for us, or a carving that they're gonna put, um, here in front of City Hall. That should be arriving soon. Um, and also I want you to be aware of our new HR assistant who started on, um, Monday. Her name is Ken Meehm, and she's absolutely wonderful. I know you're gonna love her, and she's gonna do a phenomenal job here. And, uh, groundbreaking, I had, I've had conversation with, uh, Representative Larson's office. We are going to look at groundbreaking up at Olmsted Park. That's gonna be in August. Once we confirm a date with, um, the, with the congressman, we'll get that out to you, make sure that you have invitations to that. We certainly wanna see you all there. And same with the library, um, I thi, right, the comprehensive plan, is that gonna be held at the library? That was the talk. Okay, so that is gonna be Monday, next Monday, the fifteenth, from five to seven. It'll be at the library. We'll be talking about the comprehensive plan. It'll be an open house, and, um, would love to see you there, um, interacting with the, with the public. Please put the information out to your neighbors. Um, the more feedback that we get, I think the, uh, the better we can make decisions regarding what the comprehensive plan will look like, and really what we want our community to continue to look like. So, um, if you would do that, that would be great. So, uh, that's all I have for tonight. Um, with that, I'm going to open up public comment. It is six twenty-five. If anybody within the chamber would like to make public comment, please come forward. State your name and maybe how you're affiliated with the city, and, um, try to keep your comments to three minutes. And I know, Zavi, you're interested in doing that, come on up. Make sure the blue, the button is on. You should see a blue light. Yeah, and that, that way you'll know it's on.
We got a blue light?
There you go.
Okay.
Yep.
I've never done this. I'm so scared. Um, my name is Zaviara Thorne. I'm a long-term, longtime resident of Cedar Woolley, and I am a longtime community volunteer, uh, working with both the Washington State Department of Veterans Affairs and Skagit County Senior Services. Um, I'm not really gonna talk about those, but, um, you're talking about heat. Um, the library is open for anybody that wants to go cool down, and we have a few other buildings, so get that on the city website, I guess. Anyway, I did wanna talk, I've talked to, I'm in, uh, Joe Burns's district, and I did wanna talk really briefly about roads. Though not everybody has met me, almost everybody in this town has seen me. I have spent the last three years piloting a one-wheel, which is a motorized self-balancing snowboard, uh, through the streets of Cedar Woolley for about the last three years, and I'm approaching seven thousand miles, so I know these streets intimately. In my opinion, the most dangerous, uh, place in all of this county in regards to a crosswalk is the corner of Township and Highway Twenty at the crossing of, that goes from AM PM to Rite Aid. Um, the danger we've got is in overconfidence of drivers coming off of that hill, and they're basically, basically looking, uh, for, they're just looking for, uh, traffic, and if they don't see the traffic, they immediately go into a turn. Well, they can go into a turn if there's a green light. There could be a walk sign, and if they go into that turn, they are going into, and, and I have seen, you might wanna see about the timing of those, maybe get some traffic engineers on it to see if we can do better, especially with the, um, crosswalks there. You brought up electric vehicles. How's my time? Okay, you brought up a le-
You got forty, forty-five seconds.
Forty-five seconds, okay. Um, crosswalks, paint. They are not visible at night. They, they are absolutely terrible in the paint for crosswalks, uh, and illumination. I don't know if road-mounted reflectors could be used on each of the things to bring it up more at night that it's a crosswalk. I like the idea of lights. Um, the future is going to be electric, however, a lot of people in certain income brackets are gonna be getting less, uh, more, less, more inexpensive forms, electric bikes, whatever. These roads need to be prepared for those, uh, one-wheels, EUCs, whatever. Lot of service covers are depressed, okay, down into the thing, so I will be glad to talk to the city more about that if they would like to get my input. would like to get my input.
All right, thank you, Zavi.
Thank you.
Do anybody else in the council chamber that would like to make comment?
No.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none online. I do not see anybody online, per se. If, if there is somebody online that I am not seeing, just raise your hand, and Woody will unmute you. Okay, hearing, nothing, seeing nothing. We are going to close public comment and move on. It is 6:29. We're going to move right into unfinished business. The first thing that we have is the draft 2025-2026 City Council Goals and Work Plan. And Charlie, I'll turn this over to you.
Yep, thank you, Mayor Johnson. We had this item on the last meeting as well. This is essentially a second read. Council at the time asked for some more time to review these, so we're bringing them back to get further feedback from the council. Anything you might want to see, any questions you may have at this point. And the goal here is to adopt the council goals prior to getting too deep into the budget process, so we can make sure that we incorporate your goals into the draft 25-26 budget that we present to you in the fall.
Okay. Are there any comments?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Councilman Kessie.
Okay, so this is for the, the Economic Development Action Plan? Is that the one we're looking at right now, or?
The Economic Development Action Plan is just there for reference. It's a draft at this point. So, it's still in progress with the committee, and they've, they've actually directed me to kind of reformat it a little bit and bring it back to the full council, so that'll come as a second, separate action item. It's mainly just here for reference because there are some things that, there are basically items on the council goals that reference this action plan being in place.
So, I shouldn't bring up my concerns with what I saw on that? I'll wait until you guys bring it back?
I'd recommend waiting on that. Yeah, you're not going to adopt that by adopting the council's goals at this point.
Okay.
And if I may, Charlie, I would also say you can email that right over to the committee, and then we can get your concerns, and then we can look at those before we even get it back to the council, too. It could be something, too.
Totally an option.
Madam Mayor, if I may? So, Charlie, the only thing, I, thank you for putting this all together. I know it's probably not possible, but the only thing that I was hoping to really see done is see that website increase sooner. It looks like it's still about a year out at this point. It is a year out, but I think before it was a little bit more than that, of course. There's no way to pull that left towards maybe the end of 2024, January-ish possibly, or do we want to stick at a hard July? And if you do that, I understand that.
You know, I think if we, and I would want to talk with Woody about it, you know, because he and I haven't talked about accelerating it, but I think we would, we'd be able to lean into that project a bit if we know that the council's got it in their goal set and that it's going to be embedded in the budget. That, that goes a long way to letting us get kind of a running start on certain things. Then it becomes a matter of staff capacity. We still wouldn't be in a position to essentially, you know, go under contract and spend a bunch of money on it until it's actually implemented in the budget, but we could certainly lean into it, do, and we've already started some of this, doing some research with some vendors, looking at possibilities. We've even looked at the possibility of how can we use AI to make our current website even more navigable. So, there are, there are a lot of different angles to it, but yeah, I think we can get a running start on it. We just wouldn't be able to complete that until we get into '25.
Well, I appreciate that, and, and thank you for putting this together.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Get that going. Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the draft 25-2026 City Council Goals and Work Plan.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Burns, to accept the draft 2025-26 Council, City Council Goals and Work Plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, had something.
I just had one question, just so that I know what I'm voting on. So, the, the two things that are in front of me, I'm not comfortable with saying yes if this spans off of it. Is that?
No, so the only thing you would be voting on is that last session that says City of Seidra Wully 2025-2026. Everything that has the red lines in that draft above is not part of that. This is also the working agenda, so it's that flow-down, that's just what they're going to aim to. In all reality, it's unlikely that most of that will even be touched in the city, as we saw from the last time. This is two years old, so this just gives you a goal, I think, or some, some setting. But the other one is, is our economic plan one that's in the committee, and that I would be very much so interested in hearing your thoughts or getting an email and just getting some feedback on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item number two, which is the Professional Service Agreement, Volunteers of America Regarding House Bill 1590 Housing Funds. Charlie?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Johnson. Counsel, this item, as counsel will recall, you've had discussions about this during the spring. The council decided to table this item and ask for more information on House Bill 1590 options. So, you know, where else can you go with the funding? We are planning to have a work session, study session in September to really go in-depth on that. We'll go back through all the House Bill 1590 information. We can break down the budget in more detail. Actually, brought some budget numbers tonight, which I guess I do have them here, so I can give you a little bit of an update this evening as well. One thing we've realized is, we're thinking about a request for proposals. The, the best way to kind of get a bunch of agencies to tell us what they want, or what they'll do, is for us to put out a request saying, "This is what we want." So, in September, we would have a conversation with you to try to nail down the parameters for what we want. Then we would go out to the, to the human services agencies, solicit those proposals, and then you would have things to sort through, and you would have kind of the broad spectrum of possibilities. As a part of that, though, we've realized that this VOA request for $500,000, one, we felt obligated to bring it to you because we didn't really have a process. We've got 1590 funds sitting in our account. It's a regional project, and we've recommended it. We think it's a good project and one worthy of consideration by the council. If you table, keep it tabled, we have a bit of a dilemma because we don't exactly know how much money we are, we have. Because if you end up funding it, then there's money that comes off the table for the RFP process. It makes it a little bit harder for those applicants in an RFP process to know how to scope their project because they're not exactly sure how much money is there. So, what we're asking for tonight is for the council to untable this item and consider taking action on it, either approve it, don't approve it, and they could always apply through the RFP process. That's an option that would certainly be available to them if it meets your criteria as you set them up. You could give us alternative direction, you could do nothing and just keep it where it is. But we wanted to revisit this topic with you a little bit tonight to try to get some clarity towards the September conversation and the, the bigger requests from the council to look at the broad spectrum of possibilities.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Cock.
I'm a little confused. So, the $500,000 from this funding is in the city account now. If it doesn't go to this project, does it carry forward into the next fiscal year?
Yeah, the $500,000 will, will stay in there. It's in, it's in the city's fund that's allocated to House Bill 1590. Right now, our estimate for the end of the year is going to, is $762,000 in that account in total revenues. We actually have some funds allocated, though, out through 1590 to the NOFA process through the county, and those go through, through, actually, they've kind of expired through June, but we haven't been billed for those yet. But the net on that, Kelly provided me all this detail this afternoon, is that by the end of this year in net, really in that account, we'll have $652,000 if we don't spend anything on VOA.
So, so I'm still a little confused. If there was an RFP in September, would it be for that $600,000 or for the next year?
If you said no to VOA, or if you left it unallocated, it would be a bit of a quandary, but if you said no to VOA, then there would be $652,000 left in that account, so our projection by the end of the year. If you said yes to VOA, then there'd be $152,000 left in that account. It is ongoing funding, though, so we're getting sale-tax revenue every single year, over $200,000 in revenue each year. It does have to be split out where 40% of it could be spent, could be spent for operations. It could all be spent for capital. The other 60% has to go for capital, so that would have to be a part of how we set it up. But the short story is, there is funding available for VOA if you chose to do that, or a portion of that funding for VOA if you chose to do that, and you would still have money to do an RFP process ongoing.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, yes, go ahead.
I would just like to say I appreciate you guys and being mindful that we would like to see other things come to the table, so I would like to make a motion to deny this, and it can be brought back up with the others should they see fit to do that, but I would not be in favor of spending our money on this.
So, you've made a motion to deny?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Madam Mayor, I just want to make clear that I don't think it's responsible to, to, I've talked to some developers, and I've talked to just basic people that build, and $460,000 to, and if the, I've talked to other leaders in government, and they said that this thing could run into $25 million really easy through an over-budget, so that's $600,000 per unit. Even bringing that before a city seems absurd in that nobody would lose money or give money like that, especially for a charitable organization. I believe that this money could be spent through, Helping Hands has brought forth some really good ideas that are cost-effective. We're, we're looking at helping under-fortunate people that don't have funding. We're not looking at just taking money and throwing it, wasting it, and that's what we do, wasting it on unnecessary things, and at that cost for a build process of a single unit, that is very wasteful. No developer's going to do that. So, Family Promises got great programs, and we should be exploring things that are not going to be, when we get this, we should do that cost analysis, and if it doesn't make financial sense, not even bring it to the council. Because, I mean, we, we're paying for that. All of our constituents are paying for that, and we can justify that. So, I would, I would definitely not want it to get.
Councilman Loy?
I'm on, excuse me. I'm on the opposite side of the table of Nick. I, I believe that we should be good team players occasionally, and this is a regional project, meaning Skagit County, and we, we actually need to help others around the whole county, and we, we want to have help in the future for us, but if we don't help others, they're not going to help us. And it, I'm really concerned about the, the veterans that they, this project will help, and it's, it's just the first step, and I think we, Seidra Wully needs to be part of the positive things in Skagit County and not just pull up our covers around us and we're going to be ourself. Seidra Wully's been that way ever since I can remember, and we need to start, you know, being a good teammate and working with others, and I think this would be a good place to start. We don't have to give them $500,000. We can give them half. Give them 250, or give them $200,000, but we don't have to give them 300,000 or 500,000. And I believe we need to start working with these other groups.
Yes, go ahead.
Kevin, I, I appreciate, I appreciate your insight on that, and I agree, we do need to help, we do need to help out where we can, and we do need to be team players. I think denying this request, because we had VOA in limbo for so long, we asked Kirk when he was online last time if they don't have this funding, or are they moving forward? And he said, "Absolutely, they are." I also want to be a team player in figuring out with Helping Hands what we can do, what we can do with some of these other organizations that are looking, that are looking to do good things here in Seidra Wully. And I think if, if we deny, if we deny VOA's request, what, what can happen is that we can get RFPs for any of these other groups that want to come in. We can look at them. We can, we can see what kind of funding that they need, and we can grant that funding, and then we can say, "Hey, VOA, you know, we got 100 grand left to help offset your guys' costs." I, I think we need to look at everything.
Councilman Cock?
Yes, I, I have mixed feelings about this. While the project will help displaced people, including veterans, I'm of a stronger mind to focus, maybe it's a bit parochial, on what we can do here in Seidra Wully. I think through some creative means, we could do some really important things, and Councilman Loy, I agree with you, we do need to be team players. There's opportunity through North Star to do so on the level we want to do. I'm not opposed to giving this project some money, but certainly not $500,000. That sounds like too much. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor? So, I think being a team player is definitely what we need, and if anybody in this county or state even came to us and said, "I can build units for $110,000 each," then I think we need to consider that. But if my neighborhood has a family that needs somebody who loses their car and they're in desperate need, and we all collect funds to buy a car, and then that person goes out and buys a $20,000 car for $40,000, or a $10,000 car for $20,000, that makes no sense to me. So, it's not about being a team player, it's about making sense with the dollar. And so, these units should cost the base rate of what a unit should cost to build, and then I would be more apt to it. And if they even come in less, then I'm very much so into it. You know, I'm all into getting a deal, so. If it's in Seidra Wully, then I think that's great. I think we have a lot of opportunity in Seidra Wully, but.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, so we have a motion on the table by Councilwoman Kessie, seconded by Councilman Henderson, to deny the request of $500 of the 1590 funds for the VOA project in Burlington. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. So, we have five who are, am I counting correctly? Five who are for the not giving of the funds, and one, Councilman Kevin Loy, who is opposed to that, if that makes sense. Okay, moving on then to new business. New business tonight is the Guiding Principles for the Fire District and Service Eight Contract Negotiations. Charlie, Frank, I don't know who's going to take this on first?
I'll, I'll go ahead and jump in, and I'm sure Frank will have an awful lot of context as well to provide. So, a little bit of background, we have a, in our local agreement with Fire District Eight, I included a copy of that in the packet. We are, right now, it expires at the end of this year. It was a three-year contract. We've historically done three-year contracts with them. We essentially respond, and Frank getting a lot more detail on this, but we essentially are paid by the district to respond to certain types of calls, the majority of the calls that happen in District Eight, which surrounds the city. And we are, as I said, getting ready to sit down and negotiate with them. Some things have changed, and I described some of it in the narrative, but in our last contract, we looked back at the last five years, and we updated the contract quite a bit. This is like literally my first two, three weeks on the job that I got to work on this one. But we looked back about five years, we looked at the call volume, we came up with an average over that time. The district really wanted a fixed amount that they would pay each year, and we were advocating more for a variable amount that would be based on the actual calls that we responded to, and they have since expressed to us that they would have preferred a variable amount at this point, so that, I think, can be a part of the discussion going forward. But they got a fixed amount, we were able to work out something that we thought was fair. On that, we negotiated with them a low, in hindsight, cost of living increase, essentially, CPI that applied to the, the fixed amount. My recollection is 2%. I think it's in the contract. My apologies for not having it at the tip of my tongue here, but it was running well below inflation. So, we started out pretty close to what, you know, we, we expected our costs to be at the time. As the years have gone by, the last couple of years, we've gotten further behind. So, at this point, we're, we're certain we're subsidizing the district, essentially, doing them a favor by the rate that they're paying us to respond to calls in the district. We had an opener in the contract for year three, going into this year, into 2024, that basically said if, if inflation was higher, because we were concerned at the time it would be, that we would sit down and work something out. The district met with us several times, but was unwilling or uninterested to pay anything above what was in the contract. So, we knew it's, I believe it's a 12-month cancellation there, so it didn't make any sense to cancel at that point, come talk with you about it, because the contract would expire anyway. But we knew we were going to sit down with them again and talk, so that's where we are now. We're getting ready to sit down with them and negotiate the next contract. And so, what we've done is put together some guiding principles, which I've done with councils in the past, they're helpful when you're looking at this kind of negotiation with another agency to figure out and make some recommendations to you, council, you some recommendations to you, council, you know, for what, what should be in the next contract to make sure we're on the same page with you going into the discussion with, with the district, which could be challenged. And what, another factor in this is that we are adding very soon. In fact, I shouldn't steal Frank's thunder. Frank, I'll let you say you'd talk about that. But very soon we're adding our new staff in the fire department. They'll be starting here very shortly. And what that means though, is that we're not going to have volunteers and part-time employees responding to calls in the district. And they had a lower cost. We're going to have full-time employees under a new contract doing that, which means the cost of those responses goes up significantly because we're now paying full salary and full benefits and providing an urban level of service to the district if they contract with us. It's not a volunteer fire operation, at least not fully driven volunteer fire operation at that point. So in sitting down and negotiating with them, we've put these guiding principles together. We wanted to talk with you about them. And so in general, we did a lot of update on the last contract. So I'm just going through the guiding principles here. But in general, we did a lot of update on the last contract because there historically has been a great partnership between the district and the city. And there's a lot of things that happened. Maintenance, joint training, a whole variety of things where there's back and forth. We wanted to make sure we captured that stuff in the contract to make sure everybody was covered for liability and, and that nothing was, was kind of left hanging out there. So we're, we're pretty happy with the general content of the contract as it's structured. We would recommend that it still be three years. We would recommend that it be a volume-based contract. That way if calls go way up, they end up paying us more for our actual costs of responding in the district significantly. And all, the flip side of that, of course, is if calls go way down, for whatever reason, which we don't anticipate, we, they would pay us less. So we would also, they will have a little bit of a challenge budgeting that. We'll have a little bit of a challenge, but it's doable. It's something that we can set up a check in time with them to make sure we have all forecasted our revenues correctly and our expenditures. Full direct cost recovery for Cedar Woolley. This is, we looked at that like five-year average in the past, looking at our actual costs for response based on splitting our budget up for, for, this is non-EMS. So this is just our basic fire response and BLS response. So we split up the, the budget previously. We allocated it out by call and we determined what the cost per call was. And that's how we came up with the, the amount using that five-year average going back. Going forward, it would be variable, but we'd still have an average cost per call. And so we're recommending we keep that in place. And then annual adjustments would be automatic rather than having to have something that's running way below inflation or something that they might not agree to that's maybe higher inflation, just have it automatically tied to the CPI. We do this with our labor contracts. So it actually would tie nicely in with, with our fire contract and our other labor costs. And it will follow somewhat, at least more closely, you know, the actual costs for equipment and all the other things that, that it takes to run a fire department. So that's a little bit of the background. I added in the fiscal section as well that we do receive 350,000 roughly in general fund revenue from them. We do have additional EMS revenues coming in this year from the levy that just passed. So there is almost a one-to-one offset of new money coming in and the amount of money we receive from District Eight. So if we, if we, things don't go well in this conversation and the district wants to go out on its own and do these calls or find another way, we potentially could step away from that partnership without having a fiscal impact on the city. The flip side of that as well is that our units are leaving the city to go out and respond in the district. And when they do that, that means there are fewer units in the city to respond to the city. So that, that's the policy call. I think kind of the big picture policy call for the council. We've historically done this. It's a fiscal decision. It's also a public safety decision, but do we want to continue to do that? There is, there is a cost in terms of response time by not having the city covered in that way. There are benefits in terms of partnership and other things as well. And the district certainly supports the city. But that's why we've put all this together, to have a conversation with you before we sit down with the district. And Frank, I'm sure you have a lot more to say, so I'll kick it in your way.
Any questions before I start?
Go ahead, Al.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thanks. So this is, this is, this is a pretty big agreement. And it, and it's an important one to have with Fire District, Fire District Eight. Now, Chief, could you maybe bring the light? What would happen if we just didn't do this with Fire District Eight and they had a call that we needed to respond to? It'd just be mutual aid, right? Just like we have with Mount Vernon, like we have with Burlington. How is that, how, how is it different? Can you explain that?
So there's a couple different avenues there as far as that question goes. We have a contract with the county for EMS services. So anything that involves a patient or a medical call, we're going to respond no matter what. We have the onus with the ALS services in that contract that we are going to bring for you for the next six years here in two weeks from now that got approved. And, and so for that, that side of it, we're always going to send an ambulance no matter what. This is for the basic life support and the, the initial response. So for fire engines, for the, the normal response that every other fire district in the county provides. And this collaboration has gone back for more than 30 years, all 31 years that I've been here, but even further back as far as we've had a great partnership and worked together. And the reason that we, that they appreciate this is because from our city limits to the west to District Line Road is their area. From the Skagit River all the way to the Wachem County line and that same kind of grid system. And east all the way up past Lyman, up toward Pumpkin Center and Hamilton. So in the area directly around our city to the west, they have no fire stations. In the area to the east, all the way up to Minkler Road, they have no fire station. So we cover that area for them 100%, not only for EMS like we would for anybody in our area, but for fire and initial response as well. So during three, that, and that's 365 days, 24/7. And then to the north, up past Mozier Road and to the east past Minkler, Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, we cover that as well because they're a total volunteer department except for their chief. And we are their total response. On a mutual aid agreement, which every agency in the county has under contract for mutual aid, you provide that response if, if and only if you have the resources to do so. So it's not a primary response. So I couldn't, I couldn't not staff any of my rigs anymore and just say, District Eight, you're going to handle all my calls under mutual aid. Or Burlington, you're going to come over and handle all my calls on mutual aid. I gotta be able to, the onus is on us as an entity to provide those services primarily first. And then after a, I believe it's six or eight minutes, that it'll automatically go to the next available call if no one answers up and, and goes en route automatically. And then that agency has zero responsibility to handle those calls at all unless they have coverage and choose to do so. There's no, no responsibility there. So the taxpayers for District Aid or the city of Cedar Woolley, you take care of your own area first and then outside of that, you provide mutual aid. Does that make sense?
That doesn't include ALS though, because that's a county provided resource.
Correct. And any of the transport agencies such as Mount Vernon, Burlington, Anacortes, ourselves, and Aeroskagit up at Med Seven, that's already paid for, for your EMS levy dollars and that's separate. So we are the next up, closest unit available to whatever call it is. So you'll see our ambulances sometimes in Burlington or Mount Vernon and vice versa. And once in a while, you'll see them up on the top of the pass, up toward Diablo and, and New Halim if, if needed.
Thank you, Chief.
You betcha. And there, everything is done by a response plan. So your initial response is you have to be able to cover yourself. So like if we go to a second alarm, I can't have Clear Lake or District Eight under a mutual aid for my first alarm. But if I go to a second alarm and I've exhausted my resources or, and likewise, they could do the same, then the idea is we would step up and help. So like for us, if say Clear Lake or Burlington requests mutual aid, we, we have to be able to still continue to provide the services for our primary area. But if we have extra resources or the volunteers come in, or we can staff another rig, then we can send a ladder truck or a, a tender or, or a command rig. And as we move on to this recommended unit that's coming here in the next month for the whole county, we may see a lot more of that as far as sharing of those resources with recommended unit.
Councilman Cock?
Just a quick question. Chief, so with our additional firefighters, even with the, the agreement with Fire District Eight, the response time in Cedar Woolley will still go down, right?
It should, should not go down.
I mean, should, the response time should be better.
Yes, yes.
Right. Sorry, sorry.
And.
I had this backwards. My fault. It should be better even with the, it should be quicker even with the Fire District Eight. And Fire District Eight, if they walked away, they'd have to create their own fire district with.
Well, they already have their own fire district and their primary response and taxpayers are paying for that services.
Okay.
In that entire area. But it, it would behoove them if they did want to walk away, which we're hoping they don't. That they would, they would, you know, best case scenario, they would have a station in some of those areas that could respond in a quicker.
I see.
In, in a more of a primary zone. And a lot of your insurances and stuff for these constituents is based on response time and how close your hydrants are and, and where your staff stations are and what the water flow is to be able to provide to those residents. And, and all that is calculated. Right now in those areas, they're able to utilize our services to get those insurance rates depending on the agency. And that could change for them. And we're in the hopes that we are able to come to an agreement and, and use these guiding principles to help push this contract. But just for numbers sake, in 2023, we responded to 836 calls in the district out of our 3,375. 535 of those are in that area where they don't have stations and they don't respond with us. About 301, 302 are in areas where we respond 36% of the time, that Monday through Friday deal. And then some of those are going to be actual calls that we may have sent an ambulance only to. So there's some, some more delving into those numbers that you could actually say are, are part of this contract and, and are actually, some of those are actually those EMS calls as well. This year so far, we're on pace to be above that a little bit. We're already over 430 calls right now in those same areas with almost 300 of those already in the area we cover primarily.
Another quick question. So with the contract based on volume, as more people moved into that area, we might have to send more folks, right? More service?
That, that would be true. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Were the majority of those calls this weekend? No, okay. Definitely heard you guys at work. I just, you know, I know the risk there. You're talking about policy. You're talking about financial and they gotta weigh themselves out. And, you know, I mean, it's a difficult one, right? Because like you said, if you're upriver and you gotta wait 20, 30, 40 minutes and you're having a heart attack or something like that, that's not good. What is your recommendation?
My recommendation is you allow us to move forward with these guiding principles to have your support to be able to do a fair and equitable contract that we're not paying, the, the city is not paying for services or subsidizing their process.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve that request for, sorry, let me get that on there, for the guiding principles for fire district and service contract negotiations.
All right. Okay. Is there any more discussion?
Just want to say that I appreciate especially the, the volume-based contract adjustments and making sure that we have a cost track for the CPI because their lack of willingness to negotiate last year, I think was short-sighted on their part because we, we really want to make sure that we're covering our end. It's fiscally responsible to our constituents. So thank you.
Yep. All right. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Cock to approve the guiding principles for the Fire District Eight negotiations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. With that, we've come to the end of our new business. We do have executive session. This is for pending litigation. This falls under RCW 42301101I. And so Nikki, are you looking at 10 minutes?
I think only five, Mayor.
Okay, five minutes. So it's 7:03 right now. Given time to get back there, I'm going to say we will be back at about 7:10.
New Orleans, I used to live there.
Did you used to live there? It's quite the t- city.
Yeah, you better be careful though.
Yeah, they were better. Be careful, though.
Yeah, exactly.
Especially when we were kids, we would drink this up under the sink, too. Nothing ever happened to us.
Yeah.